Start our work session, Sarah.
Thanks, Commissioners. If you could just give us a minute, we're going to move a few more people into the promote them to panelists. I know I spoke to the sheriff just a minute ago and he was struggling to get in. While we do so, our work session today is to provide an overview of the district attorney and the sheriff's office. And these are for informational purposes only. There are no action taken at these meetings. And it's just, this is a series of overviews that we're providing just so our just to kind of prepare us for the upcoming year and for the Commissioners as we proceed. We see if the sheriffs. We're, let's see. I tell you what, why don't we, if the DA's office is ready to start, I don't know, Josh, if you're waiting for anyone else? I think you probably are.
Suzanne should be getting on here momentarily.
Okay, if we could just give us a few minutes while we try to get everybody on, we're going to resend some links. For anyone listening, we're having some technical difficulties, so we're trying to give it a minute to see if other people can join Zoom. All right. We have everyone coming into the chat that we need for this presentation. Again, for those of you that are just joining us, this is an overview of the sheriff's office and then also some time for the DA's office. Just update the commission as we approach the budget. I'm not sure we decided who was going to go first. I think we did and I forgot. So if someone could help me out, let me know who we decided was going to go first, that'd be great.
I think it's me.
All right. I will turn it over to you, Sheriff Farmbrister.
All right. I've never shared my screen before, but I'm going to try and see what I got here. Oh, for heaven's sake. Can you guys see it?
There it is.
Okay. Is it still look like the PowerPoint or do I need to hit the little play button to make it full screen?
It still looks like the PowerPoint, so we can see.
Okay. How's that?
You're now in presenter view, so if you have any notes, we'll be able to see them. So it's up to you. You want to stick with this or?
Oh, I don't care. You guys can read ahead. Okay, so off to a great start here. Obviously, Sheriff Farmbrister, new to the job since January. So I just, I figured I'd kind of give a 10,000-foot view, start with a little history and then just go through kind of what we're up to. And maybe kind of end up with where we're hoping to be going. So the term sheriff is actually kind of weird. 500 AD, in what would now be considered England, they lived in geographical locations called shires, which would be similar to the counties. And inside each shire, they had what they called a reeve, who would settle disputes, but also maintain order and that kind of stuff. Eventually, he became typically not very well-loved because he was the tax collector as well, if you think back to Sheriff of Nottingham. But the sheriff is unique in the fact that from a law enforcement perspective, is we're the only law enforcement personnel or officer who is directly elected by their people. But then again, we are also only held responsible or we answer to the voters themselves. Thomas Jefferson talked about it and I've got a quote on there and everything. But the Kansas statutes are pretty clear on the sheriff in that we have three jobs, basically. One of them is to keep and preserve the peace, to serve court papers and civil process, what we call it nowadays, and maintain and operate a jail within the county. And a little-known fact is the county jail has to be located within the county seat. So for Lawrence, that's, or for Douglas County, that's Lawrence, but you go down to like Crawford County where Pittsburgh is their largest city, but Gerard is the county seat, their jail has to be in the city of Gerard. Our first sheriff in 1855 was Sam Jones. He was a postmaster from Weston. And he was appointed by a pro-slavery governor of the Kansas Territory. And while he was sheriff for those two years, he actually took part in the sacking of Lawrence and burned down the Free State Hotel and destroyed the Free State Press, which was a newspaper, and dumped all their print type in the Kansas River. That was the sheriff at the time. But our more recent history is for us, going back to 1965, was Rex Johnson. He was the sheriff for 24 years. And it's pretty unprecedented in these day and age. But he hired almost all of the people that I know and have ever associated with within the agency. And then over the next 31 years, we only had three more sheriffs. And Lauren Anderson was the sheriff that hired me. And then I worked for Sheriff Trapp for four years and then Sheriff McGovern for 16. So I'm only the, I'm only the fifth elected sheriff in the last, well, since 1965, was it 46 years or something? So there hasn't been a lot of turnover in this office. Sheriff, I have one undersheriff, which is kind of new over the last 10 or 15 years, where Sheriff McGovern had two undersheriffs and he assigned one to the operations division, one to the corrections division. But I have one undersheriff, Stacy Simmons, who you all know. And then under her are two majors. And Major Buckholz is basically the division commander for our operations division and Major Bunting is our division commander for the jail or corrections division. And then under them, they each have two captains. Our jail is, you know, and we've talked, I don't need to tell you all the specifics of this jail. But for anybody else listening out there, you know, it is a 186-bed facility. I actually worked in there on the very first day we opened it. And it was September 11th of 1999, I believe. And we have, we have housing units everywhere from minimum up to maximum in women's. We have, we kind of have a work release unit, which is not being used at the moment. Video courts, which is becoming a very huge deal. And when it comes to time to go through the budget, we're going to have to look for a little bit of personnel because this is becoming such a a big use of our personnel and staffing. We have a booking. We have 24-hour medical services, which is new over the last 15 years. And absolutely fantastic. We have a classification office. They look at everybody's, all the incarcerated person's history, charges and that kind of stuff, and they decide what, what classification level they begin at. And then they reevaluate their behavior and they can be moved up and down classifications based on their behavior. Offender registration is out there. Our transport unit out there is out there. We have a training unit. It's a dedicated training unit with a lieutenant and two employees, three employees right now. We have a full-service kitchen, so we make all of our own meals. Our IT, I put IT, but they're actually in both buildings. And then, of course, what as many of you know is our reentry team is out there. And they do a lot of the heavy lifting on the programs that we all really enjoy talking about. Downtown here at the 111 East 11th is our operations division. So obviously, we have our patrol division, which consists of four shifts that work 12-hour shifts, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days. Another little-known fact is that the Douglas County Sheriff's Office is the only agency in your county that cannot shut the lights off. The police departments, the highway patrol, they can all actually just go home if they have to. If, I mean, obviously, that would never happen, but the sheriff's office cannot. We are the, we are, we are here and we will always be here. We also have our investigations division, which is broken into two. We have detectives who handle, well, what I would say is routine investigations, such as burglaries and and any of the person felonies and crimes and homicides and forgeries, everything. Now, we also have a nexus unit, which is new for us, but it's, it used to be what was called the drug unit. And when we split with the police department, we formed our own. And what this is, is this is a unit that is specifically geared towards directed investigations, but also more of a career criminal focused in that we, we're not after, we're not after the low-level drug users. What we're after are the people who are in the drug trade, A, making money or, you know, and causing, just disrupting everything, but mainly the people who are causing, who are committing crimes as part of the drug trade. So an example would be is we've had a series of, just a rash of stolen vehicles. And what's happening is these vehicles are being parted out and sold for drug money. So we're working to get those people because while it is a non-person crime, and I agree with that, it affects so many other lives. It's, it's, it's just, it's horribly disruptive and it just kind of, it ruins a lot of people's sanctity of our community that we always have felt safe in this town. And so we're really working to try to make that, that a reality. So we have our court security division, warrants division, our civil process, which again was all the paperwork coming through the courts. Records, we have a records division now. We have administrative services up here. Our public information officer, our PIO, and our outreach team are going to be here. And then we also, the sheriff's office technically has the umbrella over the dispatch center, basically, the ECC. And so the while they are under the sheriff's office and I'm technically in charge of it, they have their own budget, they have their own director, Tony Foster, whom you've met. And they do a fantastic job. So I'm, I'm really more here for moral support for them. They're, they're pretty self-sufficient. What I want to do now is just spend a couple of minutes in talking about a few of our systems that we have that in years past, we would have, or just law enforcement in general, would, would rather not talk about and explain what it is. And just because it can be misunderstood or misinterpreted into something that it's not. So as part of my, my administration, we're trying to throw the doors open and use education to explain and show what it is we do and why we do it. So this is actually our, what we call our LPR car, a license plate reader. And those cameras that you see mounted on the back of that, they catch, they capture the image of a license plate. And the state has actually, they passed a senate bill saying, if you use one of these things, you have to have a very descriptive policy. You have to follow it, which we do. But these, and I use the analogy and it's kind of rudimentary. But if you picture two people standing on side of, on the side of, on each side of a fence and they can't see each other. And the one person on one side has a clipboard with a thousand, you know, hundreds of thousands of license plate numbers on it. And the person on the other side is looking at license plates. And that person yells over, Kansas 1234. And the other person looks through their list and they see 1235 and 1232. And they just yell back, nope. You know, so then it doesn't hit. But if they do find it on their list, they just yell back, yes. And so as a vehicle, and these can be vehicles in motion, they can be parked vehicles, but as these license plates are captured, it just, it references against the system. And these can be anything from stolen cars, which is kind of the main thing that, that these are used for. But we've had several instances where missing adults, like a person with dementia, has driven away in their vehicle and nobody can find them. And they don't have a cell phone to ping. There's no other way. What we'll do is they'll enter the tag into the system. And if we're just driving along and, and, you know, we pass this vehicle on 40 Highway and it indicates silver alert and gives all the information, we begin a very serious set of steps to verify and validate what it is that we're, that we're seeing with our eyes, but also what the computer is telling us. And only once we've verified that those things are the same and is what we're looking for is when we begin the process of taking some sort of action. So in the case of a silver alert, we would obviously attempt to stop that car, contact them, find out it, make sure that it is them. And, and then go from there and figure out how we get them back to where they belong. Amber alerts go in all the time, but also vehicles that are wanted with homicides. There was just two gentlemen that fled a southeast county jail, I don't know if it was Cherokee County or something. But one of them is a double homicide suspect. And I believe I heard, and don't quote me on this, but I heard that they had, they had maybe been, have found, have been stolen a vehicle. So they can enter that plate to that vehicle into this system. So that way, no matter what, if this vehicle somehow crosses paths with us, with us or another agency that has this, it will alert us, this is the truck you're looking for. And again, we'll go through the series two of checks and balances to make sure that it is the right one. And, and really, and this system is actually being used on the KU campus currently and has been for several years because you no longer have to buy a parking pass and put it in your window. All you do is register your plate and they drive around with these things and that thing sits there and checks plates all day long. And if your plate is not in the system, but you're parked in a, you know, a red zone or whatever, they'll mail you the ticket. So it's, it's not exactly new technology. Our drone is it's, it's pretty unbelievable, its capabilities. In fact, so much so that it's actually, when I first learned about it, it took me aback and actually kind of scared me a little bit because in the hands of, of somebody who wishes to do nefarious activities, it could be, it could be pretty handy to them. Luckily, that's not what we're about. And I've put some, some protocols in place to, to basically cut any of that out. So this, this drone that we have is pretty spectacular. It has, obviously, it has a camera with very good zoom capabilities. But also it has a spotlight, has a loudspeaker. It has a way that we can actually take a 10-pound payload and take it out somewhere and drop it off. It has the forward-looking infrared, the FLIR, so it'll, you know, show you the difference in heats, like when you're looking for a person in a field. It also has the ability to lock on to a vehicle or to a person. And, and so the, the loudspeaker could be used, say, in like a tornado, you know, where you could send it out to places and say, you know, in neighborhoods or wherever and say, get, take cover, get out of your lawn chair, put your beer down, stop watching the tornado and go to your basement. And so there's a lot of things you could do with that. But the payload is actually really pretty cool because like, if you, if you get out to Clinton Lake and somebody is drowning out in the middle of the lake, our deputies don't have any way to get out there. But what we do have is life jackets. And we could snatch one of those up, run it out there and drop it in the water to them. We could run water and food out to officers or persons who are, who have been sitting for hours on maybe a perimeter somewhere or a crime scene or, you know, somewhere where they're way out in the middle of nowhere that you can't get to. And then the FLIR, I'll show you a picture here in a second. And the, the lock-on ability is what's pretty handy too. And you see it in a lot of the LAPD chase videos and stuff. But what it does is it can actually, you can select a vehicle and it will continue to follow it with the camera. And so what that allows us to do in a pursuit is as soon as we can get the camera on it, on that vehicle, we can then back off. And that takes the risk level of that pursuit way down because that person thinks that they're no longer being chased. And therefore, they're going to slow down hopefully and start, you know, driving a little bit more non-recklessly. And then we can just follow to see where they go and catch them wherever they land. Same way if they bail out of a car, we can just put this up, it can lock on that person and it can just follow them. I was an accident guy for many, many years and I would spend hours out there drawing detailed, you know, scaled diagrams of these accident scenes. And now we can just put this thing up and take an actual picture. This is an actual picture from an actual wreck that we worked at Vinland Blacktop and Udora Blacktop, which in my opinion is the most dangerous intersection in this county, where a box truck in a semi got into it. So we were able to just throw this up in the air, document all the evidence and scene and everything perfectly. We deployed it for the Babcock fire because what we can do is we can send it up and they can actually get a real-time view of where they need to put their resources. They could see exactly where the fire was, where it was spreading, where they needed to go to access it, you know, what everything was. And they were, it was just, it was, it was one of those things, unintended perfect consequence in that we didn't think about this as being something we could do. And now all of a sudden, every fire, they're like, hey, can we get a drone? And sure, we'll, we'll send it out right away. This is actually a person who ran from a, from a pursuit. And the deputies, there's a whole video that goes along with it. And that's the person laying on the right side, on the other side of the little tree line. And those are the deputies approaching to take him into custody. And it's funny, he actually gets up and runs again. And where he was laying, the heat from his body actually changed the temperature of the grass. So you can still see his outline in the grass when he gets up to move. But he was taken into custody, no problems. And I think that's it for me. So, and I wanted to leave a little time for question and answer.
Sheriff Portio. Sheriff Farmbrister, I really appreciate the kind of overview. I know that lots of folks in our community probably do have questions about the drone and some of those policies that you put in place. You mentioned that you have some pretty strict policies, but if you could just give kind of a brief overview of when and how the drone is accessed by folks in your office and what kind of training that involves.
Yeah, absolutely. First off, our training, you have to be a certified drone operator to even touch the thing, of which I am not. So I'm not allowed to touch it. And we are, and again, and then we're also governed by the FAA regulations as far as where you can fly it, when you can fly it, how far you can fly it. One rule about drones that most people don't realize is that it, by law, you can never let it leave your line of sight. So you always have to have eyes on it. But our policy states that it's going to, or our protocol is, and it's in our policy now, is that it's going to remain at the law enforcement center locked in the cage, what we call the cage, or where we have all of our equipment until the time that it is needed. And then a certified flight, whatever, pilot can come and pick it up and then deploy it from there. So line staff, anybody else, nobody else has, should have access to it. They don't know how to run it. And if it does leave there, it has to be by supervisor's approval and it has to be for a very good reason. And I'll tell you from, since we, since they, they put it into effect in December, so it was before I actually took office. But since then, we've actually deployed it 46 times. And I've got a whole list of reasons that we did it, but it's, it's turned out to be an amazing tool. So we know how we know how, how this could look and people could worry about it. So we are trying very, very different, very, very hard to make sure that we show everybody that we're upfront about what it is and what, how we use it. And I also need to note is that our drone is not anything that John Q. Citizen couldn't buy. If you have the money, the citizen can own the exact same drone that I have.
Commissioner Reed here. I'm wondering if you can tell us about how many people are certified drone operators that have access? And then also, well, since you just referenced a number of calls so far, it sounds like you guys keep a pretty detailed log of its use and who's operating it.
Yes, extremely detailed, but we have four certified operators at the moment. We are currently seeking two more.
And to clarify, those are all sheriff's employees only?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they're all certified deputies.
Thank you, Sheriff Farmbrister. This is Commissioner Kelly. Appreciate the overview. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Portio. If we don't have any additional questions, I believe we can move on to the district attorney.
Hi, everyone. I will spend a few minutes giving you an overview of the DA's office since I took office in January, January 11th. And like Sheriff Armbrister, I'll be doing a sort of a 10,000-foot view, overview of the office. I want to give a shout out to the Dorothy Claime, who's helping me. She's actually on the call today. She's our Director of Administration, had been with the Branson Administration for 10 years. Worked her way through doing various work here in the office, including being a trial assistant, doing some public information work for the office. And then a lot of administrative work for, for the office. And she's proven to be a fantastic leader. And so she was an easy pick to run the administrative part of our office. So Dorothy's helping me with this, with this PowerPoint. And actually, she gets a lot of credit for putting it together. And is again, just instrumental in helping me with the budget process this year and giving me a lot of institutional knowledge for, for the office. So as of today, actually, we will be fully staffed in the DA's office in terms of prosecutors. We have 16 and a half lines, I guess, is how you would sort of qualify it. The half being Ted Baird, who is our, he's a retired prosecutor out of Johnson County, but is doing our charging, out of custody charging at a halftime position with my line. And then an additional 16 lawyers, prosecutors, we are staffed at 17 and a half. So we just onboarded four prosecutors in the last couple of weeks. We extended offers to our intern class, three of our interns that we had last year. They will start in August. After they take the Kansas bar exam, of course, their offers are conditioned on passing the bar. And then we have another prosecutor that'll be starting with them in August who has some experience. So I'm very grateful that we are going to be fully staffed, which means we'll be able to really move cases quickly, get jury trials done. And I'll be able to spend a lot more time doing community outreach and still keep a part-time caseload. So on our mission statement, which is on our next screen here, this is something that's been put together by the folks in our office with the help of our public information officer, who is Jill Jess. It's a newly created position within the DA's office. Hired that position. Just Jill's been with us for about, oh, two months now. She comes from a very, very experienced background in journalism and in public information communications background. So this is kind of how we see our vision statement right now. We're still tweaking it. And hopefully, we will get that finalized, especially as we get ready, hopefully soon, to launch a website for the DA's office, which I'll talk about in just a second. Hopefully soon to launch a website uh for the DA's office, which I'll talk about in just a second. So let's see, moving on to some office highlights, um, what's happened in the last, I guess, few months since I've joined the office. Um, let me just kind of hit some high points there. I've talked about being fully staffed. I think the, um, we've taken a very deliberate um hiring kind of path. We want to make sure we're hiring prosecutors who've got um a strong ethical background in, in prosecution, who are very victim centered. And um, and really do uh believe in the mission of our uh office, which is to really think about prosecution in a holistic manner. Think about alternatives to prosecution uh and working with community partners. So I'm very happy with the staff that we have now and that we will soon have in a finalized form in August. So what are the highlights? Um, we've got uh continued growth in our specialty courts and alternative programs, uh alternatives to incarceration programs. That's its separate unit. Um, in fact, we're trying to get um some information out to the public about how this is working and what we can do for the public in this regard. Jill Jess, again, our public information officer, this is kind of her long-term project, but I credit Josh Sidon. Um, who's one of our deputies and has really gotten this program up and running. We now have very, the various courts, the drug court, um, which we had our first graduate last week. We've got behavioral health court and then we have our enhanced or diversion program and our enhanced, an enhanced diversion program. What we're seeing though, I think, is possibilities of creating more fluidity within these programs. Because what happens is when we have someone who comes up for a, who may be charged with the crime. Um, we may look at that particular individual sort of snapshot in time. And so we may think, you know, maybe appropriate, this individual may be appropriate for perhaps a drug court. We find out that maybe they would benefit better from behavioral health court. Or um, they may come in on a diversion um in the diversion program and be granted a diversion. But we realize that actually there may be some underlying drug or behavioral uh problems or issues that maybe can be, this person can be helped with um being served in that, in that court. So we're trying to really create fluidity within the program so that we are really always looking at what's best for the individual who comes through, through the, the whole unit. And thankfully, we've been working with our probation uh officers, um, community supervisors or uh, if you will. Uh, Pam Wegeon's operation and um our, our partners in trying to really be open about flexibility. And I think we're all on the same page with, with that. We would like to start our restorative justice program and in fact, um, this would start with our juvenile offender. Um, uh, prosecutor, so to speak. Um, and the idea being that if we can build a robust, robust restorative justice program with juveniles, we can expand it further. Um, we haven't had the opportunity yet to launch that in its full form uh and to get really uh going on that in a serious way. Um, one of the new prosecutors that we're bringing on board, starting in August, a former, an intern, uh turned now lawyer. Uh, will be very instrumental in uh that program because he's very interested in it. And, and that's one of the reasons that, that we hired him too. So um, see that coming down the road um with some, just some basic plans. Um, and certainly um, the, the um, the desire to have a program. We've got, not mentioned on our, on our highlights, but I want to point out here is we've been working on some policies uh both externally and internally, which were pretty much non-existent and of, I think, very import, big importance is our Brady Giglio policy, which involves law enforcement or any witness who may have a bias or prejudice or any sort of uh problem with truthfulness. Has to be disclosed to the defense. Um, we've worked with our law enforcement partners to come up with the policy that I think works. Sheriff Armbrister has been very helpful in providing feedback and involvement with um that policy. And we hope to have it finalized for the public um uh soon. We're just kind of working out some kinks on that. So um, going on to the next screen, one of probably the jewel of our office, something I'm very excited about and take a lot of pride in is our special victims unit, which is um headed up by Emily Hartz. Um, and works very closely off uh with the supervision of Josh, our, our deputy. We've got um, provide trauma informed services with our victims advocates. We've got actually um one dedicated prosecutor um from, that we have the grant from VAWA Grants. Uh, provides funding for that particular prosecutor. Uh, but Emily herself as a, as the head of that unit is also um prosecuting high level um sexual assault, uh crimes against children, um domestic violence cases that are, that are very serious. So um, along with those two prosecutors, this particular, particular unit is very important to me. It's also very important to Josh. Um, and then we have a, one of our newer lawyers who wanted to be strictly an appellate lawyer has decided she wants to do it part-time as well, which is actually works out perfect for us. Um, we would like to have as many folks doing this work in this unit as possible. So uh between Emma, myself and Josh, we float in and out and we second share these cases because they're very important and they're very resource intensive, but this is really a jewel of the DA's office and something I'm very proud of. So um, we can, we do outreach in that unit. We've done an SVU summit. Um, we're doing lots of training uh with law enforcement that's already started. Um, and we continue to go forward with, with our mission to have a strong victim centered unit within the, the DA's office. Um, just sort of heading uh along here, child and needed care cases is part of what we do and what we're, um, do, what we're charged to do with. Um, with, by statute. Um, and so we continue to do our work. Uh, we've had issues with truancy in light of, of COVID. How do we deal with that? Um, kids not going to Zoom school. Um, I will tell you that we have probably the best child and needed care prosecutor in the state of Kansas, Katie Britton. Um, she's been doing the work for many years. Um, and she's fantastic and we are grateful to have her. Um, and she will be a very, very important in the um launch of the Child Advocacy Center and our role with um, with that center and dealing with uh, with the growth of, of making sure that we've got interviews that are done in a way that, that that is appropriate for children who are um violated. Um, and so a lot of promise there, continued promise there. So the last thing I want to chat with you a little bit about, and then I can answer some questions is our, um, one thing that we did mention in our PowerPoint, uh actually before getting to my last point, is that we also do care and treatment proceedings. And that is also by statute where we work with Burt Nash for mental, uh for individuals who are either a say, uh, a are danger to themselves or others. Um, we've been doing a lot of work in that space, trying to come up with alternatives to um, for people who are in mental health crisis. So we have a great partner in Burt Nash, um, and working with the court system to try to really focus um, and, and do better on, on uh mental health to the extent that we can from the DA's office. So um, that's, that's something that we're working on. So related to technology, um, and this is kind of what I wanted to highlight as sort of a wrap up. And this will be kind of our budget ask, if you will, for um, for going forward. One um very, very big um, I think need in this office is a technology upgrade, which includes a paperless filing system, a case management system that integrates with our discovery system, which is a document manage um, it system and any other um, and working with law enforcement and being able to talk to law enforcement and their systems. So um, this would make our lives much easier, much more efficient, certainly would help with moving cases quicker. Making sure that we have discovery when we need it. Um, we're not losing files, we're able to keep track of filing dates um and uh cases internally so that we can process them in a way that is more efficient. So we have an internal committee that's looking at all kinds of options. We want to make sure again that there's the ability to interface um and work with other systems that exist within the county um system. So um, that's, that's something that we're working on. We do have a priority to update our website. Right now, I understand the county's got a central website uh that all the departments sort of feed into. What we would like is to have a system where we can uh launch our data dashboard. We are working with uh Mike Brower and Matt, Matt Cravens uh to get that up and running. And we have an internal IT person, Dylan Waugh, who's fantastic, has taken on the project of putting together our dashboard. Um, and so we want to, um, and, and again, technology isn't my, my wheelhouse. But I'll, I'll tell you that we've got uh Dylan working on some great stuff with uh, with, with Matt Cravens so that we can provide case-related information and statistics on our website so that the public can access it and anyone can access it who wants to see it. So we also are going to be asking, as part of that technology upgrade, we need to uh really upgrade our existing conference room so that we can allow, um, we can have, continue to have training in-house with prosecutors. We've spent a lot of time during the lunch hour when it seems like everyone has the free time to work with law enforcement on various kinds of training. We did a collaborative training uh about six weeks ago on um LGBTQ. Um, just uh having someone who's an expert, um, talk about just, you know, pronouns and how to deal uh and address um these very difficult personal issues that, 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 that folks face in that community and, and the prejudices that they face and how we can do better to provide uh um more um sensitive and compassionate um uh work and, and, and service to, to our LGBTQ community. Uh, we did that over the lunch hour. It was a little kind of, uh, it was great and then we got a lot of people to join us. Um, however, the technology would be, would be better uh for our office if we were able to have um an upgrade to that so that we can continue to reach out to our community partners and, and have trainings that are virtual. And then um, you know, uh, we're able to, to do it, to do it, to do it better and certainly uh more often if we can do it virtually. So I think that's it in terms of what I have to say. I really would like to give both Dorothy and Josh an opportunity to cha, chime in if I missed anything. One thing that our office does is it's very much a team approach. Um, and that's how I kind of um approached the leadership of this office. So what I don't think of Dorothy and Josh will, um, others in the office will. Uh, and so I will defer to either one of them if they have anything to add and then leave it open for questions. And certainly if you all have questions that I can't answer, I will have Dorothy and Josh um ready to answer those questions as well.
If I could uh chime in, I, I think just kind of piggybacking off of um what Suzanne was, was saying about uh efficiency. The, the technology upgrades would certainly help with that uh and, and efficiency. It really ties in the, the, all the different things that we're trying to do here because uh in any of the matters that come through this office, the time is of the essence. Whether it be trying to get someone into the specialty courts, uh one of those, uh those alternative programs. There's a, a number of different documents and things that need to be uh transferred back and forth. Uh, and so it's important that we can be efficient. Uh, and then in the, the cases that are uh going through a full-fledged uh criminal prosecution where we know that alternative programming is, is not an option, uh efficiency is also inherently important. Uh, and the technology can help with uh helping to minimize the, the human error uh that can come up sometimes. Uh, and we're, we've been sort of seeing the results of, of previous uh human errors that, that were made. They happen in the course of things, but they can have uh extreme uh consequences. Uh, and that's, those are things that we're, we're working to avoid. Uh, and so um, just moving forward, kind of everything that we're, that we're, we're working with and everything that we're hoping to upgrade here. It's just all really in the entrance, in the interest of uh justice uh and in, in transparency. Um, going into the, the website and uh the, the way that we will display the data uh to the public. Uh, just really uh, just, just letting people know what we do here and uh how we do it.
This is Commissioner Portio. I really appreciate the overview and I have three questions. Um, the first really has to do with those problem solving courts. I really appreciate all of the work and effort that you all are putting into alternatives to incarceration and drug court, behavioral health court, thinking about all of this from a problem solving standpoint. Um, as you know, I've done quite a bit of work around problem solving courts from an academic perspective. And one thing that we see from the research is that discretion can often lead to a lack of participation from defendants of color in problem solving courts. So when it's left to discretionary decision-making for who gets selected into these specialized programs, we often don't see a representative group of folks being selected. So what policies and practices do you have in place when it comes to selection for these courts? And I think I heard you say that you want to have some fluidity in movement between types of problem solving courts. How do we make sure that that's something that we don't see bias creeping up in that discretionary decision-making?
Well, what I could, if I could speak to that, uh, one thing I would note is that um, I think that what it begins with is, is barriers to entry. Uh, and so we've, we've tried to eliminate as many barriers to entry as possible. Uh, for any of these programs, there, there's no application fee, uh and there's no program fee. Uh, which we're the only uh jurisdiction that is, is doing that. And I mean, that's really, I, I would say thank you to the county commission uh for allowing us to do that. Uh, which is, it's, it's also rare that you will find a jurisdiction that has a behavioral health court uh and a drug court. And so again, thank you folks for giving us the opportunity uh to do that. Uh, so getting past the barriers to entry, uh what we do is we look for a, a diversity of opinions as to uh whether someone should be um placed into one of these programs. Uh, which I believe that that helps uh reduce uh bias to a substantial degree. Uh, what we do is we look at it purely uh in this office and we get input from different uh attorneys um and different people associated with the case. Uh, we get victim input as well. Uh, but we, we look at in terms of, say that someone applies for behavioral health court, uh is referred for that program. Really what we're doing is for our initial gating criteria, we're just trying to find out if that person poses a public safety risk, if there's something that would uh essentially make them not appropriate for the program. Uh, just in terms of public safety. If that's not an issue uh that we're concerned with, then what we do is we refer it to, for instance, the behavioral health court team. Ultimate call is going to be made by the judge, but we want to get as many of these applicants before the respective team uh as possible. Because you're getting a lot of different opinions there. Uh, you're getting uh people that have a clinical background. Uh, you're getting people that have a social work background. Uh, and then you're getting uh someone that has a, a background in, in criminal justice such as a probation officer. So um, in terms of uh what we do to try and eliminate uh bias and try to have a representative um group of people that are in these programs is we, we try to get as many opinions in there as possible. Uh, and uh whether that's within this office or uh on, on a greater scale within the, the individual programs.
I think, I think to, just real quick to, to add on to that is we will be, and we are participating in GARE. Um, and we need to work with GARE um on that, you know, that particular issue of of barriers or making sure that we've got, we're really looking at our structural, um, the policies within the office to, to remedy any of those things. So um, I believe, you know, we got kind of behind on that and we've had to bump it a bit. It's such a priority for me that I just couldn't give it my, nor could Josh um give it our hundred percent sort of um focus. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I was even intent, there was a moment in time here up until recently where I was in court probably uh most of the week, just trying to make sure we were, we were keeping things moving along once the court started to open up. So now that, 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 that we're fully staffed and we've got the manpower and the resources, we'll be able to really look at those policies. And certainly um what your concern is, um commissioner, is something that's the concern of ours and one that we will address. And I think with the help of GARE, that'll, that'll, that will be really important.
That's great. And I'm glad to hear that you're using that resource through GARE. Um, and it sounds like with the focus on transparency, we'll have data about all of these decisions. So we can see how those decisions kind of play out when it comes to the populations that we have coming in and the populations that we have proceeding through these specialty courts. I also appreciate that you're fully stacked at this point. You have the people power to kind of work through some of the backlog that we've seen created because of COVID. I know that one of the things that we've talked a lot about is that we don't see much diversity in the criminal legal system when it comes to who's in the prosecutor's office. And so have we seen an increase in racial and ethnic diversity in hiring that's happened recently?
Yes, um, I have, we have, and you will, you know, one of the things that I I think it's been interesting with hiring as we've seen it and as I've talked to people and tried to recruit people of color to, to I think it's been interesting with hiring as we've seen it and as I've talked to people and tried to recruit people of color to, to prosecution. It's a difficult time in that being a prosecutor isn't, isn't a really popular sort of choice right now for law students. And, you know, I think it's the close tie with law enforcement and the, and George Floyd and, and all of what we're seeing with racial injustice. So recruiting of really quality folks to do the work is hard. It's always been difficult to recruit and I don't, and whether it's in public service. Or in any profession, it's hard to recruit people of color. I mean, I'll tell you that at KU, you know, when I, just, just what I saw over the many, many years. You'd have someone who wanted to do public service work, but then you're getting, you're lured by the hundred and fifty thousand dollar job. You know, working for Big Law and folks tend to do that. So it's hard enough as it is to have a people of color in the profession. But then to get them into prosecution work at this time is more difficult. However, we have done a really good job of that. We've, our hiring is, is, is really diverse in race and thought. And a background and perspective. And I am very excited about, about who we have working for us. So yes, it's, it's still a priority, always has been a priority. And I think we've napped some good people.
Commissioner Portillo, you had asked about the fluidity in those programs and I'm sorry, I forgot to answer that. And so kind of the way we look at, at that is when we have now sectioned this off to where it's the alternatives. To incarceration unit and it is kind of like our umbrella that, that covers our involvement in each of those programs. To sort of en- ensure consistency in the type of decisions that are being made. And then also to take into account that someone may be appropriate for a program. Other than the program they initially entered under. Being that I'm familiar with, with those programs, I, I oversee those decisions and I talk with the trial assistant. For the specialty courts as well as the assistant district attorney who attends the staffings. And I, I review each of the applications that come through. So that if things change, I, I still receive the progress reports and it appears that someone may be appropriate for, say. They entered in drug court, but maybe behavioral health court would be more appropriate. That's information we can then provide to their attorney. So it's something that I, I keep tabs on and keep an eye on. And that we, we, we try to stay aware of what's going on in those weekly staffings.
And my last question, I know that a big focus of your work has been around sexual assault, domestic violence survivors. And how do we make sure that we're really doing what we should when it comes to sexual assault and domestic violence survivors in our criminal legal system? We do know that for quite a few folks, I mean, I think this most recent very high-profile case that wrapped up yesterday. We saw that survivors can also be the perpetrator and they may be prosecuted. And so how does your office balance kind of that work on focusing on victims and survivors? Particularly when they may have charges within the criminal legal system?
So I mean, I can answer that. The case that we're talking about is the McGlin-Gonzalez, Gonzalez-McGlenn case. And what's really unfortunate about that case is that the decedent had no charges of rape. He was never charged with any crime. He's been labeled a rapist. He's been labeled all of these things post. Death. And it's, it really has put a difficult. We've sort of forgotten that we have an individual who died a very violent death. When there was no evidence to suggest, no evidence presented that, that, that he indeed committed anything that was. And so I understand the sensitivity of all of it. And I feel like I need to say that what, what transpired, what, what happened here. It may be the case that he may have been a perpetrator. We don't know. I mean, I, we have to, maybe he was, maybe he wasn't. The fact of the matter is there was not any evidence presented. In the criminal case to suggest that. So I.
And I want to be clear, I'm not speaking exclusively about this case. I think that this is a broader structural issue. Where we often see the victims of domestic violence also potentially being prosecuted within the criminal legal system. So how is there?
Right. So I think the response to your, to, I just wanted to clarify that because I think there needs to be, again, part of my function is to let people understand. What, educate people about what's happening and what happened in that case. But to your point, that's why the SVU exists. The SVU exists to, but we put a lot of extra set of eyes on it. We team approach the cases that come through. A lot of times they are complicated. They have layers of, 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 I mean, this is their intimate partner sometime, most of the time, their family members. There's so many variables to these cases. They really pull at your heartstrings. Sometimes we, it's a he said, she said, or you know, we were trying to sift through the evidence and trying to figure out what really happened in this particular case. So the purpose of the SVU is, I think to your question, is we do that. We're able to really, through having a team approach at any given time of at least three different people. Sometimes four or five, the more complicated ca- case that, that presents itself. We really look to determine what is happening here. What happened to get us to where we are, right? So that it really is looking at a holistic, the situation in a holistic manner. So that we're looking not only at quote-unquote the victim, but what, you know, the perpetrator, children who may be involved. Other family members, other people who may have a close relationship to one party or the other. How did this all happen? So that we can, can hopefully make the right call on, on prosecution. Now, sometimes it isn't the right call. We all know that. We all make mistakes. But I think this office has been really good so far in, in, in trying to avoid those mistakes. And certainly if we make them, we are going to own them and we're going to move on. So they're, they're very complicated, but I do think that we are providing that kind of oversight and overview of, of cases. And how we charge and how we ultimately resolve them. Josh, would you add anything else to that?
I, I would just say that you're kind of going back to the, one of the functions of the SVU is that we have people that are, are trauma-informed. And have received that type of training. We have people that specifically review charging. In, in domestic violence cases. For instance, we have our, our grant prosecutor. Who handles, solely responsible for charging the domestic violence cases. And then she's overseen by the trial team leader for the SVU. And then that's one of the, that would be one of the trial teams that I also oversee. So we, and we will staff those cases and we will discuss those cases. Especially if you've got, one of the things we frequently have been discussing is the issues of when there is a, for instance, a dual arrest. In a domestic situation and how do we handle those? And that's something we've been paying specific attention to. The, the trial team leader for the SVU. That's something that is extremely important to her, that we appropriately handle those matters. So I would just say that people that specialize in that area, giving special attention to those types of cases. And then having a, a group of people that are trained, that staff those matters is, is how we're really working to. Make sure that we're taking care of victims and survivors and treating everyone fairly and appropriately within the, the system that we have.
This is Commissioner Reed here. To piggyback off that last question from Commissioner Portillo. I'm curious in, in the creation of the SVU and part of that, the team approach that you all are talking about. Has there been any conversation about there be, that potentially being a multidisciplinary team? Anyway, and working with local advocacy groups and it, in having. Because of a victim, the direct victim of a crime can't, obviously their input and their feelings about it. Is weighed and that's part of your process within the office. But they can't be a part of a, a case review, so to speak. And so there are, there are models in other communities related to special victims units and domestic violence crimes especially. There, take a multidisciplinary approach. And I'm just curious if that's been part of the process. I know this is still a, in its beginning stages, thing that you're building into the office.
Yeah. So you know, we've got the Lawrence PD has started their own SVU. And it's a little different than what we're doing, but there's a lot of collaboration in, in that with law enforcement. And we'll hopefully see this continue under new leadership with Lawrence, Florence Police. So that's where we're interfacing with them and working with them. And I think you're right. I think there is opportunity for a more multidisciplinary approach to how we go forward. In processing cases. We are definitely interested in looking at those models. We are definitely interested in seeing how we can, can do that. One of the things that I think, and I just don't have enough information right now. I just haven't, don't have enough experience. And I think I just need to kind of see where we're at here as we continue to think about being effective, having an effective SVU. Is, you know, the charging decision is a, is a very delicate and serious, serious decision that's made. In this office. And I take the approach that when we charge someone, it's very serious. And that charging decision, whether it's made or not made, for whatever reason, depending on how we evaluate the case. Could be, I think has to be done very delicately and certainly within, you know, limited to a, a certain number of. Of, of individuals within our office who are trained to do it, whether it's DB cases or any other case. And that's to protect the defendant. That's to protect anyone who is going to be accused of a crime. So I think, you know, at some point, I think it's a, a great idea to have, to think about involving. Having that multidisciplinary approach. I think that makes perfect sense. At what point do we invite that, have that process? Is I think maybe the question, does that make sense? And one that I'm willing to look at and that we should look at, and I'm keeping in mind that we have to balance. There's a lot of factors that we have to balance, including the serious charging decision that's made by the office. And charging that individual. And then how does that, you know, making sure that, that we, that we're. That we're doing what we need to do to protect that, that individual from a prosecution perspective.
Thank you. And one more hopefully quick question and then want to give Commissioner Kelly some time for any questions. Maybe this is best directed to Dorothy. I don't know. Maybe Sarah perhaps has some input also. I'm curious in talking about the technology upgrades, forgetting the name of, that's Tableau. And you mentioned, and I know that that's for data dashboards, I think. But I, I'm curious, that conversation made me wonder about. The different software systems, the different parts of our local legal system are using. And curious what a, I don't know, today's status quo on that is like, how many? There's a new system coming, as I understand it, that I am not recalling the, the name of. And wondering if, where that process is between the different departments within district court.
Are you, this is Commissioner, I'm sorry, this is, I administrate. I, I think you're talking about the new court system. The move from full court to Odyssey, I believe the name of the upcoming system. You know, my understanding is that that system they're hoping to implement later this year. There's still a number of steps in that process. I think that, that process links to a number of other systems in our wheel. Everything from, how do you see what court case you have when you walk in the building? To how it links to pre-trial services, to how it would link to, to a new case management software in the district attorney's office as well. So I think we are, I, I know those issues have been identified and some concerns by the DA's office. I think we're looking to budget for some technology upgrades, not, not exactly sure what, how and, you know. What specific systems yet. But I, but I think we're trying to build some capacity to be able to do so once that Odyssey system is implemented.
That helps. I, it wasn't a fully formed question before, but I appreciate you helping me get there. I was just curious if that had impact on what the technology upgrade needs were. And what the requests would look like based on what may be required for that new system implementation. So thanks.
Yeah. And I think that what's critical, you know, it's amazing is we're in the twenty, you know, it's twenty twenty-one. And you think with technology being what it is, that there'd be that perfect case management system that inter, everyone interfaces with law enforcement. And everyone interfaces with the court. I mean, that seems so simple to me. I'm not a, a techie person, but certainly I'm a benefit of techno, I benefit from technology. And it just seems like anymore is just click, 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 and you get, you know, something delivered within, you know, twenty-four hours. Why is it can't, why can't we have a system that, that completely interfaces? And I will tell you, that's the question of the year or the, you know, sort of the decade for whatever you want to call it. By all prosecutors and judges and anyone who serves in judicial administration. This would be a perfect opportunity for someone who's really creative and has got a lot of technology background to come up with a system, but it doesn't exist. And that's what we're all trying to cobble together, a system that works and that can interface is what's important. So I wish we could have one central system, you know, with different parts, but it seems like that kind of system doesn't exist. So. More news to come and we'll keep you informed on what we learned. But I just wanted to give you the heads up that we, we really need to do something with our, with our paper. We have tons of paper every day that we go through. We lose files. Because we lose files, we, you know, we. Thankfully, we've got an amazing staff that is actually on top of it, but there's not a day that goes by that we're not on a hunt for a file. Or a hunt for something, right? And it's not lost, it's just misplaced somewhere. And certainly I just had the experience last week where I was supposed to address a motion to, or request to revoke. On a probation violation and the, the file was this big. So it's very thin compared to the other stuff I had on my desk. And it literally just got swept underneath, didn't even see it. And I finally got a friendly reminder. From Susan Binkleman's office saying, hey, can you take a look at this? You know, if I had had a system with the calendaring and all of this, it gives me, you know, due dates and all of that. I, I, if case list, I would have been able to probably not have that issue arise. So.
This Commissioner Kelly, I want to be conscious of our time because I think we have a meeting at five thirty that is filled with. Decisions still to be made. So I just have one quick question. Our, our specialty courts are fairly new, right? Our behavioral health court, our drug courts are new. And we're actually put in place by a different district attorney. And I'd be interested to hear just a little bit about your process for evaluating those courts. Especially as we, I mean, these meetings are partially to prepare us for our budget hearings. How you are determining the budget, the costs for those specialty courts, how you're evaluating that? Are you looking at other courts? I'm just interested in hearing your process and evaluating.
Josh, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, thank you. And so essentially what we're doing is. So a lot of the, a lot of the budgeting is done through Criminal Justice Services. And so we, we work in, in close coordination with that department. And we will sometimes talk with them about, say for instance, we've got someone in behavioral health court. Who may need to go to residential substance use treatment. We can talk with Criminal Justice Services and see where we're at in terms of, from a budgetary perspective. You know, do we have enough in the budget to send someone there? If that's something that comes up. In terms of evaluating, there are some different work groups that, that meet to see where we're at. In terms of how these programs are, are doing. We do receive some external, external reports on that. And then we also have, for each of the programs, there is a database. That Criminal Justice Services in, in our office can, can enter information into. We can track referrals. We track everything coming down to, from when the referral is received. To how long it takes to process it at various stages. And so that's something that we can constantly look at. We can always get an assessment and see, you know, where are we at? It's taking a longer time to get people into these programs or it's taking longer than we want to. Where, what can we do to reduce the amount of time from referral to actual acceptance into the program? So really just, it's, I, I think it's, it's, it's really, it's all data-driven essentially. And then we have to determine, okay. essentially. And then we have to determine, okay, if we want to improve this process, if we want to make this quicker, what's that going to cost? And, and then we can have a better assessment of what we think it would, it would take funding wise. So really it's looking at what improvements we can make based upon the funding that we have and then determining if additional funding is necessary, why specifically do we need that and how much is it going to cost? Hopefully that gives you a little bit more insight.
Thanks. That's helpful.
Well, thank you all. And this is Commissioner Portillo. As Patrick said, we do have a meeting at 5:30. So if there is nothing more, we will recess for the next 19 minutes.
Thank you.
5:30. Thank you.